Okay, it is seven o'clock and I would like to call the Monday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting to order. And if we could have a roll call, please?
Okay, Mr. Jensen, Mrs. Albert.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kuchko.
Here.
Mr. Estrin. Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Okay, and Mr. Blackhaller, can you advise us if proper notice is given for this meeting?
Certainly, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by sections nineteen point eight-four and sixty-five point nine-zero of the Wisconsin statutes has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the Fisher newspaper, Rice Lake Chronicle type, to the Ocker leader, and to radio stations W J M C and W A Q E indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than twenty-four hours prior to meeting.
Thank you. Here's proper notice has been given. And now we come to our appearance section. If there's anyone signed up for appearances. Now is your time. Seeing no one, we'll move on to looking for an approval of our regular session meeting minutes from Monday, October thirteenth.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes. Now we move to our consent agenda where we have the monthly budget, the board bills, five resignations, and four recommendations for employment. So we're looking for a rec or a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. And now we move to our accommodation section where we have the Rice Lake area school district student recognition. And so we will find those. So we're going to start with the Rice Lake Middle School.
Hi, I'm Jenna Mundon, eighth grade teacher at the middle school. I'm here to recognize Lucas Rue. His parents are Steve and Gel Rue. Lucas Rue stands out because of his respectful nature. However, that is not only one of his many characteristics. Lucas leads by example in the classroom and is an independent learner. Each day, Lucas strives for academic excellence and genuinely wants to be successful. Lucas's work ethic is admirable, along with his leadership skills. In I L A, he has emerged as a positive and productive role model. He actively contributes because he wants our school to be a better place. Thank you, Lucas, for your dedication to Rice Lake Middle School.
Thank you, Lucas.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And now we have Hoggan Elementary.
Hello, I am Natalie Springer, and I am here with Jackson Barahona. And we have Mrs. Venetta, who is up on the screen. She recorded her tribute to Jackson.
My name is Carolyn Venetta, and I teach reading at Hoggan Elementary School where Jackson Barahona is a third grader. Jackson is being recognized this evening for his excellence as a learner. Jackson asks questions when he doesn't understand. He thinks deeply about what we are learning as evidenced by the fact that he questions inconsistencies to previous learning, and he rereads to check to make sure that his work is correct. Jackson also comes to class every day prepared with his homework done. He attacks his assignments with enthusiasm and responds to questions with confidence. He is not afraid to be wrong, and he takes correction in a positive way. Jackson helps others in a gentle and respectful manner. He is always cheerful and has a positive outlook, even when things are hard. When Jackson spent several weeks in quarantine, he worked from home. His classroom teacher reported that he completed all of his work for her and for me. This shows how concerned he is about his schoolwork. For these reasons, Jackson shows excellence as a learner and a student, and should be recognized for his hard work and dedication. Way to go, Jackson.
Way to go. Thanks, Jack. And Hilltop Elementary.
Good evening. My name is Kyo Olaf. I'm a reading teacher at Hilltop Elementary, and I'm here tonight to recognize Delaney Pete. She's a kindergartner at Hilltop, and I'd like to recognize Delaney. She is just a joy to work with. I have told several people that if you're ever having a bad day, you should just go down to her classroom and visit her every day that I go pick her up. She just like jumps out of her chair with a big smile and comes running. She's super fun to work with. She always has a positive attitude, and she encourages the partner that she works with as well, and always does her best. She's made a lot of improvements since the beginning of the year, and it's really due to how hard she works and how dedicated she is when she's with me and always doing her best.
And now we have the high school, Rice Lake High School.
Good evening. My name is Mark Boisey. I'm the assistant principal of the high school, and tonight I get to introduce you to Jacob McDonald. Jacob is a ninth grader at the high school, and he is the son of Stephanie Wyatt. Tonight, he's been nominated for his perseverance and resilience. He's been nominated by Mrs. Estrin and Ms. Wright, and here's what they say about Jacob. We've nominated Jacob McDonald to receive recognition at the Board of Education meeting. Jacob is a student in our English nine A B C class and has demonstrated incredible resiliency. In the classroom, Jacob is an appreciated valuable contributor to small and large group discussions, as he frequently offers relevant insightful knowledge on a variety of topics. Jacob is extremely pleasant, and his kind demeanor puts a smile on everyone's face. Jacob's teachers want him to know they see enormous potential in him and hope he continues to learn to improve his skills to be successful now and also be very successful once he graduates from high school. Congratulations, Jacob.
And Tainter Elementary.
Hi, I'm back. That's the great thing about this job. I work in the afternoon at Tainter as a reading teacher as well. So I'm here tonight to recognize Deslin Scribner. Deslin is also such a hard worker, and even when things are tough for her, or she's having a bad day, she always approaches her work with such a positive attitude. She is also encouraging to the partner who's with her every day. She always does her best, even when things are hard for her, and she kind of acknowledges that. She just tackles every problem with her best effort to overcome the challenges that face her. So I just really like to recognize again Deslin for her perseverance and resilience.
Well, thank you, students and teachers for all you do. And students, you you will all be admitted into a drawing for at the end of the year. You'll receive a free Chromebook if you win the drawing. So thank you and appreciate you coming tonight. And you're welcome to enter the cold and go home if you'd like to, or you can stick around. Randy?
Yeah.
Are you gonna do it? Okay. Have a good night. Okay, our next, we'll be in our report section. Our first report is about the Education Foundation grants that are provided to our teachers to further the education opportunities in our school district. And we have Randy.
You bet. The Education Foundation of Rice Lake was established in nineteen ninety-six to assist teachers in the school district with grant dollars to support programs and projects that go beyond the scope of the classroom. The foundation has a well-established endowment from which only interest earned on the investment of the principal is ever spent. Since two thousand, the founder, the Education Foundation has granted over sixty-eight thousand dollars to teachers in the Rice Lake area school district, including Saint Joseph's Catholic School. Grants have ranged from three hundred seventy-five dollars up to twenty-five hundred dollars and have assisted with activities influencing all age levels from kindergarten through high school. The foundation board consists of parents and community members who are invested in the education of our children. Board members are President Lori Zarbach, Vice President Shelby Fader, Treasurer Randy Krautkamp, Randy Kraut Kramer, sorry, Randy, Secretary Eric Thorson, At-Large Members Bill Smith, Dan Fitzgerald, and Randy Drost. Many of the board members have been serving since the early nineties and since the nineties and early two thousands. And as we move into a new year, we'll be looking for new board members to join and continue to support the quality educational programs we have for so many years. Typically, the grant application process runs in the spring. This year, it ran in August for the start of the new school year. Three grants were awarded. Rice Lake Middle School, love one thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars to Ann McMiniman. She'll be here at a later meeting to talk about that. One thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars went to Ariana Hilsted, assisted by Jeremy Peterson for STEM extensions across the curriculum project at Saint Joseph's School. They'll be here at a different meeting to talk about it. And the third and final grant for one thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars was for Vex Robotics, and Steve Adams from Rice Lake High School is here to talk a little bit more about that. And I was gonna say, and I think Ben and Evo came along with to talk more about it as well.
So we have a presentation that you've got, Randy, hopefully.
You bet. There's so first of all, I'd just like to say thank you for the for the generosity. We truly appreciate it, and hopefully we put the funds to good use. We used it this year to start, hopefully, an annual tournament that we hosted. We hosted it in December eighteenth, which was right after we presented last time at the board meeting, and it worked out really, really well for us. And so I'd like to just walk through that presentation, then I'll get out of the way and let the boys actually who do the work, I just get some of the credit, but they do all of the work. So let's go on, if you would please, to the next slide.
Okay.
So first, thank you. We appreciate the support. Super important for us to get this. We have had a very, very generous support. We have spent some of the money to buy one of the fields that you'll see. We haven't spent the rest of the money yet. The money came later than than we were, you know, kind of planning, and so we've got some things that we still need to buy. We hope to put in G P S units in some of the robots, so the robots will know exactly where they are on the field and be able to to move around without any of our involvement to get where they need to go, which is really kind of cool. But we haven't made those purchases yet, and that just takes, first of all, everything has backordered right now anyway, but it takes some time and some energy for us to get that. And then we'd like to thank McCain's Foods, who's provided so much of our sponsorship. The rightly Rice Lake High School maintenance team, who are amazing in getting us or helping us get set up. No matter what I requested of them, they were just super generous and helpful and said, we'll just take care of it, and they did. The technology department set up all the neat screens and displays that we had. We really had a high-tech event. It was super cool. And then we couldn't have done it without all the parents. It seems like every parent of a student involved did something to help us out that day so that Pete and I could focus on actually running the tournament itself. So in my opinion, and I may be horribly biased in this, we put on one of the best tournaments that we've attended, just from the location, how organized it was, how well it ran, and just the the displays and how we could keep everybody engaged and the day moving along, even though we had some technical glitches to start with. So if you can go to the next slide, all right. If it's possible to show that video, I watch this video a fair bit because I can't tell myself. So this is just the field setup. I took this probably six o'clock Saturday morning after a very short and non-restful night's sleep the night before, and that's all it is, is just the display. So the display on the left is the skills field, and then the main tournament field is in the middle, and we've got displays so that people could watch from home, people could watch from the stands. We had cameras running to show all the action for all the kids, and it worked out really, really well. Once again, I'm super proud of what we were able to put together, but the real, what really matters is what the kids behind me are gonna talk about next. So if we can get on to the next slide, and I'll introduce it. It's like we want to watch this one more time. All right. So we had seven rounds of of competition, and so in the morning is really the qualifying section of it. And then for playoffs, the teams get to pick their partner. It's four robots on the field, so two sets of robots per team. In the morning, they're randomly assigned other robots to partner with. So they may be teamed with another Rice Lake team. They may be facing a Rice Lake team. The best team in the morning were Armin Kifmeyer, Ben Newble, who's behind me, Maya Peterson, and Evo Morby, who's Maury, who's also behind me. So that turned out to be the best team on the day, and they selected another Rice Lake team to be their partners. And they didn't pick the second place team because Rice Lake, I don't know how far down Opportunity was.
Was it five, six places down?
So oftentimes, you know, the first place team picks the second place team, but they went strategic and picked a team that would match their skills and complement what they what they do. And so Rice Lake had the opportunity then, and we were successful, and we were able to win the tournament with the hard work that these gentlemen behind me did. So I'm gonna turn it over to them after I say one more thing. The team, the robot on the front left was ranked as the sixth best robot, not in Rice Lake, not in Wisconsin, not in North America, but for the world. So I don't know how many countries our Vex is in, but it's a big, it's a big, it's a big number. That one right there, yes, yep. It's got some hydraulics. It has some whole bunch of cool stuff. Now, we might lose nine more times if we face them, but we didn't lose today. So I'm gonna turn it over to these gentlemen.
All right, so just kind of go through it? Yep, just go through it. You can see it right up there as we go, and then I'd like you to get the robot out and show them what it does.
All right, so.
Next slide, please.
Oh, yeah, and next slide. So for how Vex Robotics works is there is two minutes of competition. The first fifteen seconds is fully autonomous, and that is completely done by code, no driver input whatsoever. Next slide. And.
That's the end of the fifteen. We'll go back if you would.
Yeah. Yeah, so what happened in the autonomous is the main goal of autonomous is to get those little funny-looking towers onto your team's side. So as you can see, on the top right was our robot, and we got one goal over. And on the bottom right was Opportunity, and they also got another one over. But during that, the sixth best in the world robot, they got into a little battle, and they grabbed on the same goal, and Opportunity dragged the other robot backwards. And I don't know, it was just kind of interesting. Yeah. It was quite the sight. Next slide.
Evo, you wanna do this one?
Sure. So here we have key moment one. You can see that I believe over there is on the left is sixth in the world, and then ours. And sixth in the world, you can see on their red kind of teeter-totter thing, has a bunch of the towers on top of it. Now, what that kind of does is it adds extra points onto the towers that you have if they're balancing on that thing. So they're, you know, way far ahead of us in the first few seconds of that first game right there. So next slide, please. So over there, you can see that I believe it is, yes, the Spirit knocked over their teeter-totter thing, kind of ruining all the sixth in the world and the other team's points that were on the teeter-tower, teeter-totter, sorry. And now it's time for our team and Opportunity to bring those back over onto our side. So next slide, please.
Yeah, so then, once we got all those off, it not only took away points from the opposing team, but it also opened it up for us to bring all those goals onto our side. So what so what you can see is Spirit trying to grab on to those goals and drag them over to our side. And then you can also see Opportunity starting to stack those goals onto our teeter-totter, and that just, it was a good show of teamwork, and it really was a key part of how we won. Next slide, please. Yeah, so the end result was we ended up with most of the towers on our side, plus it looks like one of them balanced, and we won forty-two seventy-seven.
Nice job.
Yeah, and.
Yeah. So on the left there, you can see Opportunity and Spirit. This is after we won, obviously, and we're holding our trophy things over there. And then on the right, you have Janko Shurmasi and Sidney Organ, who won the Best Design Award out of all the teams that showed up, which was really cool that another Rice Lake team won that award. It's a pretty important and cool award to have. Next slide, please. Oh, that's it. Okay.
The design award is for the team that does the best documentation. It's important not only to design a good robot, but to have some sort of a path that you've done to build that robot. So they have sixty to seventy pages in their design notebook of the what they've done, the steps in their process, the mistakes that they've made, and all the changes and corrections that they've gone. And so just that, having that documentation is worth something, and we had a whole team of engineers and volunteers who interviewed all the students headed by a person who contacted us to say, hey, I do this all around the country. Can I come to your tournament and volunteer? And so that's what they did. So here's their robot. They're just gonna walk you through a couple of things, hopefully, that it does.
Okay, I'll take over for this first part right here. So this is our robot. We we designed it completely from scratch with a lot of help from Mr. Peterson and Mr. Adams along the way. It uses the claw feature up here. I don't know, Ben, can you move that? Okay, great. That's just a normal standard Vex claw, but we modified it with this big metal piece up here to get a better grip on the towers, and it can lift them up and down a lot better. It is two motor, four-wheel drive with these chains running to drive all four wheels. We have, this folds up here. We can get that up there like that. It has to be within an eighteen by eighteen by eighteen kind of cube, and with this folded up like this, we meet the requirements for that, because if it's down here, obviously, you can see, we're kind of cutting it close there. It's way above eighteen. So I'll set this down now so it can kind of.
Yeah, so with the with the four-wheel drive, that really helped a bunch going over obstacles, bringing stuff like that. As you can see with our lift, we we have two motors, and we did what's called a four-bar lift, and it has four aluminum bars that go up and down, and because of the way those are, it keeps the claw horizontal the entire time. So you can see as it goes up and down, it keeps it level, and that just kind of helps a little bit. We.
Drive it out there and back.
Yeah. Let's see if there's something here. That has.
Keep her moving.
So it's all parts, all Vex parts, but the but the teams decide how they're gonna put those parts together, what kind of wheels they're gonna use, where do they put the wheels, where do they put the the brain and the motors and all those things? So they're making all the decisions and making all the pieces fit together, and is this the first version of this robot?
It is far from it.
Right. It's a lot of perseverance for the students as they make lots of mistakes, try lots of things, burn through a lot of material until we finally get to a robot that they're happy with, and they were working on it last Thursday, and they'll work on it again tomorrow, probably to add some things. I took a couple of pieces that weren't attached off so I could bring it here tonight, but it's just a neat process of iterative design for the whole for the whole thing. Thank you.
Very cool.
Well, thank you. Always great to see what's going on and what is being done in our district, and thanks for the Education Foundation for supporting these these efforts and programs. So appreciate that. Next, we go to our school crossing guard recognition week, January tenth through the fourteenth, which is usually a pretty cold one. So we are very thankful this time of year and and all year, really. And we just, we are thankful we work with the city to help support this program. We've taken it on financially because it is important to get our kids safely across the school or across the street when school's in session. And if you're ever there picking up your kid, just take a moment to say thank you to our local crossing guards, and you know what? Tell your kids to say thank you too, because that's very important when they get across that street. So there is a proclamation, and so we would like to recognize the crossing guards this week, and the state of Wisconsin submitted a proclamation, so it is an action item, and we would, I would appreciate a motion to approve the proclamation to recognize our Wisconsin crossing guards this year. Or, you know, for this thing, I don't think we need.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second? All in favor? So please thank your crossing guards. And now we move to Randy Drost and our open enrollment space limits. Looking for approval of that.
You bet. So I'll just pull that up quickly. Actually, let me do it this way. Here, there we go. So each year, school districts are allowed to make make space determinations for open enrollment students. And so this year, as in every year, we look at open enrollment space for students with disabilities. So we're allowed to deny open enrollment for students with special education needs if there are no limits determined for regular education students. And then the page that's in the paperwork that's included in your packet, it's determined based on physical space in buildings, physical space based on caseload weight and provisions of service, programs and services offered. And so the following information was used to make cross categorical and speech and language open enrollment space determinations for next year. So looking at current student population count, number of transfers, number of initial referrals, current numbers of notifications for students currently receiving, currently receiving birth to three services, and physical space for students identified with significant and/or multiple disabilities. Cross categorical and related service caseload weights for our current staff members. And then the number of cross categorical students parentally privately placed. And so our recommendation for next school year is that early childhood, special education and 4K for open enrollment spaces, there is no space available. For high needs, significant and/or multiple disabilities in grades K through twelve, K through twenty-one, through age twenty-one, we are saying there is no space available for elementary cross categorical at Hoggan Hilltop and Tainer Elementary Schools. We're saying there's no space available. Middle school cross categorical, no space available. High school cross categorical, no space available. And for speech and language, education in the school district for students open enrolled, there's no space available. Included is a significant amount of data in terms of looking back to seventeen eighteen, what our special education population was on October first and then at year end. Incoming students, open enrolled or moved into the district. Referrals then, going back to, I believe, the last one is the seventeen eighteen school year. So birth to three, three K and four K kindergarten and elementary level, middle school level and high school level. And so we would be looking for the board to take action to deny any open enrollments for students who have special education needs during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
All right, that's an action item. Looking for a motion to deny any open enrollment for those areas.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Next, we have our finance committee report. We met on the seventh of January. Mr. Kuchko Bowman and Astrine were there. Proper notice was given, minutes were approved. Our first was a request for the middle school band instruments. They are recommending the purchase of four tubas and one bass trombone. And these are needed to accommodate the increase in students obviously playing those particular instruments. And the board or the committee recommends to approve that. I believe the mountains thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the instruments. And then Mr. Blackholler and Mr. Dross gave us an update on the community aquatic center, including a video that was kind of cool to see what this could potentially be. But we talked about the progress and the development of a land lease and a facility lease agreement between the nonprofit and the school district. And we would like to see this in place soon to ensure that the project can be developed at the start of this summer. And so that's moving forward nicely. And hopefully we'll have something, you know, soon that we can actually vote on to show that, you know, we're in support for it. And, you know, these are the pieces that we need in terms of finances to keep that project moving. And then we received an update on the health plan. And Mr. Blackholler announced that Henry, a local company, has signed an agreement to share the facility, which is a good thing because it will increase our hours to at least forty hours a week. New staffing is in place, so that's good. And we looked at the current costs and the trend, slightly higher this year due to increased utilization. But we're hoping it still comes with, well within budget. So that's a good news for the, our local clinic and our health plan. We reviewed the bills, approved those for recommended approval. And then we're meeting again on the fourteenth of February at nine AM. Any questions? Okay, moving on to the compensation meeting, committee meeting. That we met on December twentieth. All members were present. Proper notice was given. And then we reviewed, Mr. Dross presented us with what we've been kind of looking at for the last couple of years, maybe fifteen years, I don't know. But we wanted to see kind of where we stood in relation to a, you know, the surrounding districts, the state, et cetera. And hopefully develop a new compensation model that gets away from this grid. And I think it was very enlightening and I think we're getting close to seeing something from our administrative team in terms of, you know, moving away from that particular box and more of a flexible trend line, if you will. So nothing to report in terms of specifics at this moment, but hopefully soon. And then we looked at substitute pay. And obviously, you know, it's difficult to find people for anything, but substitute teachers and para professionals included. So we're looking to become a little more competitive in that particular realm. And so the administration is recommending an increase for teachers, full day to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day, half-day sixty-five dollars, and then increasing our para professionals to a hundred dollars a day. And if a half-day, it's fifty-five dollars a day and a free lunch, by the way. So that's a good thing. And then at the local school that you're at, I suppose. But then after, if you work ten consecutive days or ten days, they don't have to be consecutive, pardon me. And then you will get bumped up to a hundred and fifty dollars a day if you're a teacher, a substitute teacher, and eighty dollars a day for a half-day. And then similar to the para, a hundred and ten dollars a day after you're working ten days in the district and sixty dollars a day for a half-day. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to amend or propose an amendment to the ten-day for substitute teacher. I'd like to see it five days. And after five days, they get to one fifty.
Well, I'm not really looking for action, but I noted.
Well, we'll bring it forward for action at the next meeting. So you could have some, if you wanted to continue to have some discussion about that, you bet.
Oh, we'll bring it.
Well, you know, I don't know when we're meeting next, so.
Are you on that committee, Bert?
Yeah.
Yeah, he is.
Was there discussion five versus ten days at the committee level?
No, not at the time, but now there.
Yeah.
Oh, and my reason is if you listen to any education news, you know, subs are hard to find. And I think this would make it a little bit easier. In case you don't know, we're competing against five or six schools around us and the fact that Spooner went.
Right, retention and they've been there.
I'd just like to see it reduced to five.
I mean, when do we vote on it anyways?
Well, at the next regular meeting, but we would go retroactive to the beginning of the year here.
Well, I would support that.
To the, I'm sorry, to the beginning of the calendar year. So we go back, you know, retroactive to the beginning of last week when we take action.
I think we could have that as the voting item and if we oppose it, then we come back with ten. But I think retention, track, retain. You know, and I think it's across, you know, para and teacher.
Question for Mr. Dross.
Yeah.
Have we ever, for some reason in the back of my mind, and maybe it wasn't with Rice Lake, maybe it was at the, at the college that I was dealing with. Have we ever had, at the ten-day level, once you've been there ten or more days, you go to whatever base salary is?
Yes, if you're in a, if you're in a long-term sub role and you've been in the same position for ten consecutive days, yes. Then you automatically go to our base starting wage, which is, I admit, end up being, it'll be, it's over two hundred dollars a day. So yes, when you're, say, I'm going to sub for, Josh, I'll just use your wife as an example. Say Holly is out for a while and I'm going to sub for her for an extended period of time. I would then after ten days be bumped up to the base teacher rate.
So is the, in the, is the difference between what Bert and Steve were just talking about and Josh versus my question, it's ten day, it's eleven days and more in the same position versus simply eleven days in the district?
No, yes. So what we're talking about, the increase in pay for subs is that just if you sub any ten days during the year, you would be bumped up to that higher rate.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That clarifies. Thank you very much.
Yes, and going back to the consecutive days, if someone is long-term subbing in a role, once they hit that eleventh day, it's a little over two hundred and fifteen dollars a day is our base rate.
Yeah, but that's only if you're like a long-term sub in the same classroom doing the same thing.
Consecutive days.
Not, you know, bounce around ten.
Correct, correct.
Because presumably there's more value add if you're doing the same thing.
Correct.
Well, there's still value add if you've been in the district for six days or eleven days.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not a lot of getting to know people, you know, whatever, whatever. Anyways. Okay, well, I would support that. And so we'll bring that back and then we'll vote on it as a group, I suppose. Went to closed session, came out, nothing happened. We said our, we haven't set our next meeting, so we don't know when that will be. We adjourned six twenty-four. Any other questions or recommendations? No? Okay, moving on, curriculum committee, Abby Fisher, update?
Curriculum met Tuesday, December twenty-first. We heard initially from Jessica Flash about the curriculum that we're planning for our new River Dock Nature Conservancy. So Jessica had some great updates and I want to say thank you both to Jessica and our staff who have said, yes, I am willing to take my students out there this year. So Jessica's hoping to get some of our elementary students out to the conservancy still this academic year. And I'm excited to see how that works out. Then we heard an update from our director for curriculum instruction, Marsha. She gave us an update on assessment and just all the various exams and tests that our students take. Most of them are mandated. They're not by choice. So she was filling us in on the schedules and when that happens and just highlighting the couple of places where we had choice and what we're using. So we appreciate that update from Marsha. The next meeting of curriculum will be January twenty-fifth at five-thirty in this room.
Great, thank you for that update. And then we move on to our public relations committee meeting update, Bert Richards.
Yeah, we met on Monday, January third, and all were present through the minutes and we talked about radio advertising. Actually, we've been talking about it for a while. And if I remember right, Randy, we decided on the eight thousand to spend with WJMC. I don't know if that's an action item or not. Okay. So I would request a motion to approve. It's in your packet. All three of them that were presented are in your packet, but it kind of explains what they thought.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve the advertising program, which we've done in the past. At eight thousand dollars, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes.
We've been talking a little bit again with the Donovan group. And they're actually hiring the Donovan group to look at some of our communications. And I believe, Randy, that's going to take place. I don't know if it needs action.
That's eight thousand dollars as well.
Another eight thousand.
We would look for a motion to approve. I don't know if there was a figure on that.
That's eight thousand as well. The original, when we started working with them a couple of years ago, it was going to be for twelve thousand dollars then COVID. And we just said, you know what? Let's put that on hold for right now. And so we requested a different quote and we left off the video production pieces. That's not something we were interested in right now. So that brought it down from twelve thousand to eight thousand.
So they're going to help with communications externally and we talked in finance, anything internally as well or primarily just overs?
They can.
Both? Okay.
Oh, schmear.
Working on branding the district better as a whole.
Including creating that branding guide when other groups want to use our logo. And that's, you know, something Colleen and I deal extensively with.
Okay.
There are other school districts using them right now, right? Do we know? Can you name a couple? I'm just curious.
Turtle Lake, close by, they were very happy with the work they had done with them. That's the closest one I know.
Okay, thank you.
From Milwaukee, Randy?
Their honor was, yeah, it's the southern part of the state. Yep, Milwaukee, you're correct.
Because we're looking for a motion to approve that contract, eight thousand dollars for the Donovan group.
So moved.
Motion is second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? So that motion passes.
We had, not to belabor, but we did have an excellent presentation by Aaron Johnson and Marty Helgeson relative to different communications internally and standardizing some of the things that are now going out that aren't standardized. And I think Aaron and Marty are going to spearhead some of those communications, you know, regarding social media and even stuff that's out there as far as flyers. Anyway, they made a presentation that was really fantastic and I think they got a handle on.
Yeah.
I think action is needed for any.
No, no.
But it does deserve mention.
Great. Next meeting dates or?
We haven't determined that yet.
Okay, thank you for that update. Then we have our district administrative observation committee met. Gary Spear, do you have an update?
The board district administrator observation committee met the morning of January third. Meeting was called order at eight thirty AM. All members were present along with Mr. Dross. We reviewed and approved the minutes from the November one, twenty-twenty-one meeting. The group also reviewed and revised the newest draft of Mr. Dross' district administrator personal goals and action plans for the current year. These are included in the board packet, starting on page sixty-one. Discussion centered around the four areas that we have used with our scorecard. Student success, our people, families and communities, finance and resources. We also talked about the district's latest scorecard from the state and also some of the student studer data that we've had coming in. We'll need an action item to accept the goals and action plan for the year, Mr. Bowman. So that would be coming up. The meeting adjourned and our next meeting will be the first full week of March. Exact date yet to be determined.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so we do have an action item included in your packet is the district administrator's personal goals and action plans, as was, that was reviewed by the committee with some very slight changes and recommendations for changes. And looking for a motion to approve that document that is in your packet.
Can we comment on that?
Yeah.
So I was really happy to see those goals. Two things, the, it looked like that we're going to address some of the building and gymnasium and some of those things. But also that we're going to take a look at what you call administrative governance. I thought those two things were excellent. And being, being the guy I am on the school board, I was a little disappointed that I didn't see things in there that had anything to do with work experience or career technical planning. But having said that, only got. But having said that, only got a year and a half to try to do something.
Keep at it. So we're still looking for a motion to.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion in regards to the document? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that action plan and goals passes. And then, Mr. Spear, just if you can inform the board, what's the next step after that briefly?
We will be meeting again in March, looking at a written reflective narrative which establishes some subsets of questions related to the goals that we just approved.
Okay.
And then we'll be meeting with, with Mr. Dross to go over those.
Sounds good. Thank you. So it's an ongoing process and I appreciate your work on that. Mr. Spear, so now we have the Policy Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting update. Kevin Johnson, who's not here. So is there someone from that group?
Tonight, we just, we brought forward a handful of policies for a first reading. That's all we have tonight.
Okay. So those policies are listed there and in your packet and they're just for a first reading. So if you have any questions, contact somebody on that committee or Mr. Dross. Moving on, we have the information section and the WSB Delegate Assembly Information Convention Resolutions. Information on that, somebody?
Just the pieces that were included, sorry, the pieces that were included in your packet. And so, yeah, and those will be also, as a few of us head to the, the W Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention next week, that will, those will be things that will be discussed there as well.
Excellent. Thank you. And then March fourteenth is a scheduled board meeting. And it's also a scheduled spring break for our district. So many of our staff are not, you know, required to be around, students, board members might be leaving. Do we look to cancel that meeting, move it, have it, discussion? I won't be here.
I was gonna, I would say, how many people are not going to be here on that?
By raise of hands?
I will not be.
Okay. Is there a particular reason that time of year that it would be prudent to have two meetings a month or do you think we'd be okay?
The only, I think we'd be okay if we canceled that one. Pat, is that, if we don't have a first board meeting in March, as far as budgetary pieces, are we okay or potential pool lease pieces or? Okay, we can probably, we can probably work around it if we did not have that meeting.
You mean the pool lease agreement that you said?
Yeah.
So I mean, if.
I guess if we needed to, we could have a call, a special meeting and I, you were going to say that, I think, but if we needed to.
All right, well, so we're going to temporarily recommend to pass on that particular meeting. Thank you. Other meetings, upcoming meeting schedules in your packet. If there's anything that you see interesting, I know there's what convention coming up. I don't know if you'd still sign up for that or not, but let Colleen know. We don't have any students here tonight, so we're going to skip that. And then district administrator, any upcoming events or?
Yeah, a few things to talk about happening in the district. So tomorrow night is a big night. Our Future Business Leaders of America group is sponsoring for many years now, Coaches Versus Cancer event. So at both the boys and girls basketball doubleheader, big doubleheader tomorrow night. Lots of things going on to raise funds and then also at the hockey game. And so I know a lot of different students and staff members have different roles in raising funds to fight cancer. So Coaches Versus Cancer tomorrow night. Wednesday night, there's the Community Awards Event, Chamber of Commerce Community Awards Event at Turtleback. Andy Jandro, our police school liaison officer is going to be recognized for the Innovation in Education Award. Next Monday night, a week from tonight, there's a high school pet ban fundraiser. Now typically, traditionally, they have, it's been, I think, a pie and ice cream. Some nights, that's been our board retreat night and we've had pie and ice cream. A little bit different, this year they are going to put on a concert in the auditorium beginning at six PM and they're asking for donations. And so we'd ask people to support them. And then also our choir trip students. So we have choir students who are planning a trip to Chicago. And as a fundraiser, they're going to have an indoor garage sale in the Rice Lake High School cafeteria Saturday, January twenty second from eight to one. So choirship fundraiser, Saturday, January twenty second, eight to one. And with all of these things, you can learn more about them and other things by going to our district Facebook page.
Great, thank you. And upcoming election information?
Yes, and so earlier tonight at six o'clock, we had our verification of candidacy meeting. And so we have six people who will appear on the ballot in April. We do not need a primary in February. And so our six candidates will appear on the ballot in this order. Number one will be Jerry Miller, number two, Diane Kosher, number three, Phil Henkel, number four, Miriam Vavra, number five, Vanessa Asp, Seder Halstern, and number six, Linda Toliftrude. And so they'll appear on the ballot in that order and voters are asked to vote for three, for our three open positions. And so as we get closer to that, I'll send out an all district email reminding parents and staff members to vote and just kind of outlining again who the six candidates are. And just reminding them that they're all at large seats and vote for three.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on, we're looking for a motion to go into closed session to consider nineteen eighty five one C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. With the topic being potential action to accept, support staff members resignation. Looking for a roll call, please, Mr. Blackholler.
Hey, Mrs. Aubert.
Mr. Richard. Are looking for a motion first.
I'm sorry, move to go to close.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Aubert.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuchko?
Yes.
Mr. Strain?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
And Mr. Jensen?
That motion passes, so we will enter closed session.